We are returning from closed session with no reportable actions. We'll call. Councilmember Barnes?
Present.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
Councilmember Spurg?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
And Mayor Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Turner, would you lead us in the presence of the legions?
Sure.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of Lakeport City Council for July 18th. At the back we have citizen input forms if you want to bring anything to our attention, or if you're here to speak on an item on the agenda, wait for that item to come up. Acceptance of the agenda? Madam Mayor, I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our consent agenda. We have the ordinances, so we waive the reading except by title of any ordinance. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of June 20th, the regular adjourned city council meeting of June 27th and June 29th, and the special city council meeting of July 11th. Approve the warrant register of June 23rd. Approve application number 2017-025 with staff recommendations for the annual Clearlake High School homecoming parade to take place on Main Street on September 22nd. Approve application number 2017-026 with staff recommendations for the sponsoring survivorship run-walk to take place on October 7th. Approve application number 2017-027 with staff recommendations for the annual splash-in event to take place on September 15th and 16th. Reject the claim number 2017-002 filed by James Kuzick as recommended by Rema. And approve the proposed memorandum of understanding between the Lakeport Unified School District and the City of Lakeport for the services of a school resource officer and authorize the city manager to sign. Would anyone like to pull any of those for discussion? Anyone from the public? Okay, we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Kelly, do we have any citizen input tonight? Wilda Shock. The subject, Much Ado About Nothing: Shakespeare at the Lake.
I added Shakespeare at the lake, just so you know, it wasn't personal. Good evening, councilmembers and staff and public. The actors are rehearsing, the directors are directing, the producers are producing, and the cast and crew are building sets. So you have the fundraiser here tonight to remind you about Shakespeare at the Lake, Much Ado About Nothing, Saturday and Sunday nights, July 29th and 30th. Starts at 6:30 in Library Park, and we think you will enjoy it. We want everybody to come out and have fun. It's a very witty comedic presentation, lighthearted, kind of the more fun pieces of Shakespeare. So you don't have to get too entrenched in dialogue or anything. You can just watch and enjoy and appreciate. We appreciate the support from the city, making Library Park available and staff available to help with it. It's been smooth sailing so far, and we hope that will continue. Funds raised, support scholarships for students at Mendocino College, Lake Center, and in particular in the theater program, both in the acting classes and in the production classes. So we hope that we will see lots of you out there. And if anyone is interested in being a sponsor, I do have still some forms, and we have a couple of days before names go in the program. So I'm going to give these to Kelly, and she will distribute them. And I would happily pick up a check from you if you're interested in being a sponsor. They will come immediately. So thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you in Library Park.
So Wilda, is that a free event then?
It is definitely free. So that's why we have sponsorships, so that we can encourage people of all ages to come out, especially those who might not otherwise go to a theater performance.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
It was a great event last year, and we had one of our key actors right up here at the event last year. It was awesome, it was great.
Yeah. Definitely. I think it will be very, very favorably received this year, and it looks like there's going to be a large turnout. So come early, bring your blanket or a lawn chair, and be prepared to have a fun night.
Very cool. Thank you, Wilda.
Thank you.
Let's see, next we have a presentation of donation by the Lakeport Main Street Association for the annual fireworks show in Library Park. We have Barbara, and Al, and Jeanette. Hey, everybody.
Is this kind of like the Three Stooges?
Oh, no.
Is it? Well, you know, we do appreciate all the help that the city gives us, and give us Park Street and the city officials. Everybody from the city was a tremendous help from 6:30 in the morning till actually 12 o'clock at night. So I mean, they did their very best, and we really do... Well, I don't... The night before. Doc. Anyway, we do appreciate each and every one of you and everything the city does. And Brad, you've done a great job, and you've got a tremendous crew, and we thank you very, very much. And it's not a huge donation, but we do have a donation that we would like to give to you.
Thank you.
Next year we can make... Would you like to say something now?
I just want to say, on behalf of the Main Street businesses, I am one of two of them. I don't know, it's a huge success all day, all night. And the public thanks us too. Well, thank you for being up, and thank you for having, you know, the umbrellas out. That was a big thing a couple of years ago. But I just want to say thank you to the city as well.
And he sold a lot of pizzas.
He sold a lot of pizzas. We couldn't keep up. We couldn't keep up.
Anyway, thank you very, very much. We look forward to next year. And now we're getting ready for the Taste of Lake County. So if anybody would like to participate or help us at the bar or help us in the registration, we would be happy to have you. And you don't have to all fight to do it. I mean, if you'd like to, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
And when are the meetings? Barbara, do you need some more people?
We're having our next meeting on the 25th.
We have a mixer, actually.
We have a mixer on the 26th of Twisted Sisters. And before that, an hour before that starts, we're going to have our meeting. The meeting? And then everyone's welcome to the mixer to find out more about it? Yep.
And Carmen, they are giving us a small sampler of orders, and so they're opening their place up to us, so...
Very nice.
Which is very nice, and we kind of want to make it a quarterly event.
Okay.
Even, we used to, and we're going to bring it back in the near future, is having a business of the quarter.
Uh huh.
And we'll have different increments of how you can participate, who we would like to have as a business quarter, and the board will vote on them, and then they'll be at the next quarter meeting. So everybody is welcome. Thank you.
Do you have some flyers for that event that you're getting out?
We do. We do have one.
Check your email, I sent it to you this afternoon. In the email? Okay.
That's a yes.
Okay.
That's a yes, thank you.
Thank you for all you do for 4th of July, because that's really, you know, a great event for the all-day-long here in the park and on the street. And we really appreciate it. It makes our 4th of July having you guys here, so...
Well, what we are going to also do is we're going to have more music. We did this year later in the day.
It was very nice.
But we're anticipating having it a little earlier and playing till, you know, and then as the fireworks go, maybe playing some patriotic type music. So that's in the works, as well as we did discuss tonight. We had a board meeting, and we are in the plans of doing the three lap posts and dedicating the mural at the same time. So we just want to get what everybody wants on the garnet, on the plaque, and then we will set up a time, and if it's agreement with the city, then we'll do it then.
Wonderful.
And we'll have it there for the paper, et cetera. So, thank you.
We get lots of compliments on the mural that you sponsored.
And they'll be giving us the theme ship, huh?
It was great, yes. Ship looks awesome on there, yes.
Thank you very much.
So the Main Street Association donated $1,000 to the fireworks. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There you go, Kelly. You're in charge.
I think you're going to pass that one.
You don't all get them. All right. Next up, finance. Director. Auditor contract.
Good evening, council. What's in front of you is the professional service agreement with JJACPA for the 1617... For the 1718 financial statement audit and single audit this year. The city has enjoyed a productive working relationship with the independent professional accounting firm. And just to clarify, the independent auditors are not... They do not work for the city, but they're independent. They're an independent contractor who Council or Margaret contracts with to provide an objective opinion on the financial statements using generally accepted accounting principles and very specific guidelines under the AICPA audit standards. So what we're asking is for you to authorize the city manager to sign the attached professional service agreement with JJACPA for independent auditing services, which would include a slight budget preparation increase of $8,350. The city is required to obtain a single audit this year because we had over $750,000 in federal expenditures. So that includes a separate audit of federal-specific programs, which was not included in putting together their original budget.
So what did you say? Oh, $8,350?
Correct.
So this is our annual budget and same, our annual audit, and it's the same people that we've used in the past?
Correct.
I think we're doing an RFP next year.
We're going to do an RFP next year.
Okay.
With me being new, the transition, they have experienced auditing the city, so we decided that it would be best to keep them for this transition year, and then call it with an RFP next year.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone from the public? Okay. There's no further discussion, we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd approve and authorize the city manager to execute the professional service agreement with JJACPA for independent auditing services.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Nick. And it's you again, delinquent utility user accounts.
Good evening again. The city council is being asked to cause a written reports to be prepared and filed with the city clerk containing a description of each parcel of real property within the city and C L M D to which delinquent water and sewer, user charges, fees, and penalties are applicable. The council is further being asked to provide notice of a public hearing and set such a public hearing to hear any protest concerning placing delinquent water and sewer charges on the tax roll. When the staff report was prepared, there was about $40,000 in delinquent accounts. We've done some further research, and a final list was prepared today by staff, and the total was $34,000. So with your approval, we'll go ahead and notice the public hearing and send out letters to the delinquent account holders on Thursday, with the public hearing being scheduled for August 8th, 2017, which would be a special meeting. If everybody's able to attend on that date, it would be at 5:00 p.m.
And the reason it's a special meeting is because it has to be turned in to the auditor by the 10th of August. So we can't wait till the August 15th meeting.
Do we have this on our calendar already, or is this...
I thought Hillary sent a list of upcoming meetings. Hopefully that was on there.
What was the date again?
It's August 8th.
Obviously, I think 5.
5/15, yeah. What's that?
It says 5.
It says 5? Well, probably 5/15 if we could post it down, if that's all right. Because then anybody that, you know, any of the councilmembers, I think it's a little easier to get here.
I think the notice is already going out.
Is the notice already going out?
So you might just want to start late.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't catch that, yeah. Because we normally like to start about 5:15.
Okay. But is that 5:00?
Going to turn it for 15 minutes. Get that on form.
This council member can just walk faster from her office.
Okay, so this would allow us to put those delinquent bills on the tax roll.
Yes. Yeah, and I mean, this resolution is essentially causing staff to create the reports and to issue the public hearing. And then once we have the public hearing, you will be provided with the actual list, at which time, once that's approved, you will submit it to the county auditor.
And many of them, there's a letter going out that this is happening, and so sometimes a lot of them get paid off even before we get to that point, but...
So we have to do this every time?
Annually.
Annually, okay. Any questions?
So we do this every year?
We do. Last year, I think it was, I think it was around 4,000. We didn't do it last year. The count was really low. So, but this year, since it's climbed quite a bit, we put it back on again.
800% increase.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Everyone must be paid up. If there's no other discussion, we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd move to adopt the resolution electing to have the delinquent utility charges collected on the tax roll for fiscal year 2016, 2017, fixing the time and place of the hearing of the written report on such charges and prescribing notice of such hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Nick. Next, we're going to review an adoption of the City of Lakeport Economic Development Strategic Plan. Kevin Ingram.
I'm very excited when I get to follow audits.
You can't go wrong there.
While Nick's getting the PowerPoint and the projector warmed up, I just want to give a real big thank you to our lead act team, and many of them are out here in attendance this evening. Special shout-out to Wilda and Christine Hud, who kind of formed the backbone of our team. They made sure to keep kicking me and keeping this thing moving forward. It's been, as I've said a couple of times, a two-year process. Wilda does correct me and says, no, we've only been working on this for 19 months. So that does make me feel a little better. And in our defense, in that 19 months, we have made significant progress on a lot of the different goals and implementation measures that are presented in here, most specifically the lakefront plan and, of course, the downtown improvement plan. So it hasn't been time wasted. Okay, so here we go. Our City of Lakeport Strategic Plan, 2017, '22. On works. So we embarked on this process not for the sake of just creating another plan to sit on the shelf. You had to remember kind of the environment that we're sitting in here, you know, with the loss of redevelopment in 2012. That was really kind of our big piece to the whole economic development push. And part of the redevelopment plan included an implementation plan. You were required to do a five-year implementation plan. So without redevelopment and without the benefit of that plan anymore, we're kind of sort of floundering in some of our efforts. And, you know, as those of you that attended our economic development workshop last week, the sort of strategic planning process is kind of part of the economic 101 process. So we entered into that process with LEEDAC. But what we did in that is we looked really, you know, hey, you know, even without redevelopment, we do have some amazing organizations in our city that are all working towards some of these same goals. So real focus of this whole process was kind of understanding what groups are out there, what they're doing already, and kind of capitalizing and tying all of our limited resources together to come up with a process for an economic development plan. And we figured that that was a really big piece without having the benefit of redevelopment anymore. We also decided, really, at the beginning part, that we already had a number of existing studies already on the pitch. There wasn't really a reason to go out, hire a consultant, enter on a two-year planning process, to come out with the same outcomes that we already know from documents like our general plan, specifically the economic land use and community design elements. As I mentioned before, there's a lot of elements that are still valuable out of those redevelopment implementation plans. The county has been working, just completed their comprehensive economic development plan. And of course, there's a lot of carryover into what we do there at a regional level that's really important. And then, of course, our lakefront revitalization plan has a tremendous amount of information that feeds directly into here as far as suggestions. So we kind of tied all those together as a means of kind of developing a action plan for the next five years. I keep going the wrong way. One of the first actions we did was a SWOT analysis, analyzing our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And I'm going to put Pam on the spot here, because she said something very important in that process. It's like, why are we doing this? We all, I've been part of many strategic planning efforts. We all do SWOTS, and it never comes back. Well, part of our process was kind of tying all those resources together. And I hope that Pam sees now how some of these do back in. If not, then we'll have to go back and make sure that that's the case. But we really looked at these. These are very similar to the same SWOT analysis you'll see in Lake County's plan. They're the same, that actually looks very identical to the one that the council did a couple of years ago as part of our goals in planning strategy. There's nothing really new here. I mean, it's all some of the same pieces. And as such, they really tie it together in a little later into what our goals actually came about. And that was a key piece in putting all of our, tying all of our limited resources together and making sure we got everything pointed in the right direction. We also did some economic and statistical analysis that was largely from the lakefront plan market assessment report that just was completed in 2016. And then there was a lot of valuable information in regards to, that came directly out of our housing element in 2014. So when we put all those together, those key findings kind of helped solidify some of those things we are seeing in the SWOT analysis and in our existing studies. And they all kind of lend even more direction on which way we should go. So this first section here is kind of looking at the labor pool information. Oops, something falling on the screen there. But basically, what the trends you're seeing is, in regards to income, we know that nearly half of all Lakeport residents make less than $35,000 compared to 1/3 statewide. Median income levels in Lakeport are $25,000 less than the state average. Those are pieces we need to keep in mind. And then also, I think one positive news is in the area of unemployment. We tend to do better than the county, and in many cases, better than the state. So, but at the same time, we're not seeing a whole lot of projected growth in much of our employment industry. So I think these are key pieces that we got to keep in mind when we go out and work with some of our educational providers and work with some of our first employers and workforce people out in the county. I put this one in here not necessarily to talk specifically about transient occupancy tax, but mostly because this chart here kind of shows a general trend that we see across the board in most of our economic figures. You kind of see that figures were doing really good prior to the recession. They fell off dramatically, and then they start to, we start to see a recovery. We start to see that in many of our economic figures. Unfortunately, in transient occupancy, you'll notice that Lakeport, we've been lagging behind. Our transient occupancy is not recovering at the same rate that we're seeing in Lake County and/or in other city of Clearlake for that matter. So those are all key pieces that we got to keep track of as well.
Kevin, I was looking at that chart, and I noticed one thing. 2009, it started going down. And did anybody find out that that had anything to do with ConocoTide Harbor?
I think it very much has to do with ConocoTide Harbor. In addition to the timing, that that's also when recession really started to pick up too. So the two of them together did not play very well. I think you see that.
Yeah.
The primary retail market area is another area that we really focused on. This came out of the BAE economic report that was prepared as part of a lakefront plan. It kind of talks about and supports what some earlier plans are talking about, that Lakeport kind of serves as the economic hub for a large portion of the county, or the western portion of the county there, with a primary retail market area for 25,000 people. That means that people who may not live directly within the city limits come to Lakeport on a daily basis and depend upon the facilities that Lakeport offers for most of their daily needs. That's the good news. The bad news is this report also talks that we may be missing quite a lot of opportunities in specific areas of employment and sales where folks have to leave the region and buy their goods elsewhere because they may not be available in the local area. The biggest areas there were the general merchandise stores and non-store retailers. And I had to look that up. And so just really quickly, what your general merchandise stores are, those are stores that consist of non-food or non-grocery products sold in a typical brick-and-mortar storefront. And your non-stored retail includes the selling of goods and services outside the confines of a retail facility. And examples include mail and internet-based ordering, as well as marketing and other forms of direct selling. Also, some of the other ones, to a lesser degree, were food service and drinking places, which comes up over and over again, we're seeing in the lakefront plan, that people want to see more restaurants and places like that in our downtown area. And then furniture and home furniture stores. There also is another large area of leakage as well. So all those things we've kind of tied together. And as we know, we don't want to get overwhelmed with 20 or 30 different goals. We really tied ourselves down to three sort of overarching goals to really concentrate our economic development focus over the next five years. So those are promote and participate in regional economic development initiatives, expand and support business retention and traction efforts, and then strive to enhance the historic downtown and lakefront area. The process that we used to kind of tie everything together, kind of identifying all the different stakeholders that would play a part in this, outlining the different actions that needed to be taken to achieve these goals, both at a short, medium, and long-term range, is a process called logic modeling, where we kind of went through and identified all those different groups that would be part of that. Outputs would be things like creating handouts in my department, the community development department, that would assist in the ease of people opening up businesses in Lake County or going out and performing site visits to kind of gauge and see what the health is of Lakeport businesses. Those are all kind of tangible outputs that lead to the outcomes, which are the sort of implementation measures of the plan. So we designed outcomes for short-term, one to two years, medium-term, two to five years. And then we also have some longer-term, kind of overarching goals. But they really, they're in there to kind of demonstrate what we're trying to work to, but they really kind of fall outside of the sculpt of this. This is really sort of a five-year plan and really focusing on what we're going to do to hit the ground running in the first one to two years. So really quickly, there's our three goals again. And this kind of just kind of hits some of the highlights of the things under each of those goals. So for regional economic development issues, like I said earlier, we've already made some good strides on a lot of these. Margaret has been very instrumental, along with Wilda, in getting the Lake County Economic Development Corporation back up and running. And we're seeing lots of good things develop out of there. I think the most specific thing that I'm most excited about is the development of the broadband coalition and trying to address the lack of internet service, or good quality internet service that we have here in the... And the Economic Development Corporation is already taking the lead on there. And that couldn't have happened without the leadership that some of our Lakeport folks have been providing that to get them back up on their feet. Attract the full-service lodging and conference dining facility. We've already taken some of the initial steps there in the preparation of a hotel fee subbuilding. study. It's nearing completion. We're very excited about some of the results coming in there, and LEEDAC and the city also will be fundamental in kind of taking that next step to ultimately do what we want, and that's build some additional hotel and conferences and dining facilities in the Lakeport area. And I already covered broadband initiative. Kind of a bread and butter of economic development is business retention and attraction efforts, but it is a very important piece. And I think one of the statistics that was thrown out in our workshop last Monday was nearly three-quarters of all new jobs come from existing businesses and not necessarily the more attractive nature of bringing in new businesses. So, you know, supporting your existing businesses is a huge piece. And one of the things we need to do immediately is update and bring back up to par our vacant commercial property and building inventory that is quite dated, and then also working directly with, you know, we're sitting here in this beautiful wine country area, yet in some senses, it feels like Lakeport might be getting left out of that whole piece. We only have one tasting room, and I think we can do a lot more to try and attract both direct wine-related businesses, but also ancillary uses as well to the Lakeport area. And then another big piece that Margaret has done and management has done, and want to try and expand out a little bit further, is the direct outreach and business site visits and kind of, there's a lot of good, successful programs out there. I've been to different conferences. Hayward has done some phenomenal work with their business outreach team that I think we can glean a lot of information from without a lot of work involved. And the last goal there, the enhance historic downtown and lakefront area, I think there's no arguments that the lakefront and the historic downtown area are the greatest pieces we have to offer to both our community and visitors. Another piece is the Lakefront Revitalization Plan, which is, the public draft is complete. It's available. I encourage people to go take a look at it on the website. We'll begin the public meeting process of that in early August with the Planning Commission, and then ultimately it will be here in front of you guys for ultimate adoption. And then with having this plan in place, we're ready to kind of hit the ground and start attacking some of the implementation measures in there as well. Overwhelmingly, what we experienced in our public workshops for the Lakefront Revitalization Plan was increasing shopping and dining opportunities downtown. So I think that's, you know, that's definitely going to be somewhere that attention needs to be turned. And then lastly, of course, reopening Carnegie Library to the public. Excited, we've got hopefully good bids coming in tomorrow for the construction efforts there, and that should be back in front of you in no time as well. So we've been working on it for 19 months, but I hope we're demonstrating that we are picking these things off as we go as well. So if you have any specific questions, the logic models kind of tie all those pieces together, kind of talk about who is already doing what and what needs to be done in order to get where we want to be. I've included them in the presentation, but if anyone's got any specifics about them, we can go over those directly. At this time, if there's anybody else from LEEDAC who'd like to add anything, or if definitely willing to take questions from the public and council.
Thank you, Kevin. It's very impressive. Ton of work. Any questions from council?
So Kevin, so we have this economic development strategic plan, and is that something that, I mean, I heard a meeting the other day, this EO of the chamber was saying that people were saying, well, you know, this is America, and people should be able to do their business, blah, 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 and they should be able to come in and do anything. And when you look at, let's just say, motor vehicle and parts dealers, we have 76 million, we have a retail supply of 77 million, and then they want to put it in AutoZone, and they want to put another one in. And so is it something that planning considers when they look at that? And then to take it a step further, we have 57 million of consumer expenditures, we have four times more than that in retail, and then planning is listening to Dollar General come into Lakeport and want to put a story when we have already over 400% more than what our needs are. Do they look at that as part of the strategic plan and say, or do they just say, well, this fits all the other things? Or is that part of their methodology in making decisions? Because like countywide, you could see where that could be an issue. If we have four times what we need, then why do we need another one? But if it is America and it's free, well, so well, we have this plan, so that's why we're not going with it. Is that something that we would be using as a tool to like discourage more of the same thing and cherry picking and like pulling out, you know, like some AutoZone comes in and wipes out Napa, let's say, because they've got, you know, let's just say, for example? Is that what this tool is for, or is it just to give you kind of like a nebulous idea of where we should be in five, ten or 20 years?
Well, I think you hit on it. I mean, it's a tool, but I mean, it's a tool to, I mean, if that's a direction that the city wants to go, they can use this to demonstrate some of those points. But you'd have to ultimately make some fundamental changes to the existing ordinances and other, you know, sort of actual physical municipal code operations before you could just, I mean, you can use it kind of as an overarching item to bring into a debate, but unless you change the codes, I don't think you could necessarily, you just say blankly to somebody, hey, we've already got, you know, our fair share of this type of industry, we're not interested. But, you know, I don't think that any of our implementation measures match to that, but I mean, you could go in that direction, I suppose.
So would that be some kind of a plan that we would work towards? I mean, when you drive through St. Helena and you drive through Calistoga and you see the, you know, the growth of the small businesses and the thriving little communities there, and you don't see, you know, the chain stores and all that kind of stuff there and a glaring Dollar General in the middle of Calistoga, or something like that, because they've made these plans, so would this be a tool to make maybe revisions in the future to try and guide the future vision of what we see in this area?
Yeah, I think so. I think one of the key studies that we've looked at in this whole process is an older study, but yet it still had some huge valuable insight, and that was the 2003 Business Retention and Recruitment Plan. And this is a little different than, you know, than looking at these economic studies, but I think the key thing that kept coming up over there, and you see it show up in our general plan, is changing the image that this is not a good place to do business. And that's, you know, coming up with some tools, some easy packets that we can hand out, a better website presence where we're reaching out and making it easy for business to come in, whatever that business might be. But right now, the reputation has sort of been that, you know, it's not easy to do business here in Lakeport, so that's kind of continuing on there. But I don't think that there's anything directly going in there, talking about recommending ordinance changes. But that's not to say that you couldn't. It's just I think most of the ordinance changes that we're recommending or sort of positions that we're trying to take are in making it easier to do business in Lakeport.
At this point right now, we don't have anything that allows us to control saturation of a certain type of business or, you know, or not. So that shouldn't be part of the planning committee's discussions, because that's not anything we have available in the toolbox right now.
Yeah, it just seems that whenever you talk about economic development, whether it's regional or whether it's local, they always talk about business retention and expansion, and yet they bring in the same business again in an area like, let's say they put a Dollar General in Upper Lake, it could have a devastating thing, but the plan is to retain local business and the flavor of the community and the vision, but it seems like we're missing the piece that controls whether or not we want to just let the laissez-faire go on, and that's what I'm.
Well, you have to remember that government doesn't decide what people want to buy or where they want to shop, and property owners have the right to do what that property allows them to do on it.
Exactly.
So this is, you're talking more of a community plan, and this is the economic development plan. So a little parallel maybe, but not the same.
Then what about the, I noticed that it seems like commercial property is cheaper in the city of Lakeport, and yet we have a lower occupancy rate. And there was something that said that option to reduce the amount of vacant, is to proactively work with property owners, reducing the asking rents, and yet they're already lower. Is this a consequence of can't do business here in Lakeport kind of thing, or is it the image that we used to have, or, because it seems kind of strange that, I mean, here you are in the economic hub, 25,000 potential people, and yet we have vacant buildings more so than the county, and the rates, rents are lower?
Yeah. I think you're hitting on a very fine point. We've been working, you know, in my department the past two years to kind of combat that one. I think we're making good strides, but, you know, those things stick around. But yeah, I mean, that's, you know, you look at that, I think you're referring to, I think it's page 18, the table 14, the office and retail market overview. I thought this was a very telling, a very telling statistic here, kind of showing that that, you know, we have much higher inventory, what, 38.4% of our existing inventory for professional office space and an equal amount for retail space in the city is currently vacant. And when you compare that to even just the county, it's significantly higher. And then when you get down to the rents, like you said, we're close and maybe even lower our competitors, but yet we still have a huge amount. So I think there is a residual impact to that reputation that we're trying to combat, that we are not a friendly place to do business. And so, I mean, you see when you go to page 31 or 30, page 30, that's the logic model for the second goal, expand and support business retention and traction efforts. And you can see in that output section, those are the physical actions that we are taking to achieve these goals. A lot of them are focused on that statistic. The top one up there is updating that vacant commercial property inventory, which is two-plus years old. Issuance of, continued issuance of business loans to local businesses, develop a comprehensive guide to doing business in Lakeport, and conduct business site visits and analyze the findings and see if we can get to the root of what is that issue here. I think there's some other pieces too. I mean, I think unfortunately, some of our vacant buildings are not move-in ready either, so that makes it difficult to just, sort of someone to come in and just open up shop. And maybe we need to look at some different alternatives and how to help bring some of those key buildings so that they are move-in ready and retail can come in. And once we turn that corner, I think we'll see it thrive. The downtown improvements, I think, are hopefully helping in that regards, but they're only one piece.
Lastly, one of the things that we all love to see is more restaurants and drinking places. The council member Barnes and I are just commiserating about the fact that just getting open can usually bankrupt a lot of the entrepreneurs, and with environmental health and the tremendously onerous responsibilities, putting in everything, you know, to make it legal. Is there any kind of facilitation or understanding that you came through within your meetings that would help people come to grips with this? Because it's just incredibly stifling to get in there and then you find out that you're going to be down 50 grand before you even get the doors open. And that's not counting the furnishings and everything else, that's just to make it legal.
I think we have a very good tool in our community in CDS. They issue a lot of business loans, they help different folks with their business plans. Unfortunately, you know, what, two or three years ago, it seemed like just because of the way the market was set up, we couldn't even give away money. We had a lot of money there, but just it was set up. We've seen that really change over the past year and a half, and hopefully as a result of that, we'll start to see more of those things come in. I mean, you know, it's easy to see, the easiest one to see is Twisted Sisters. I mean, leaving the office two years ago, that block was dead. You know, you leave, you go walk downtown between after 6 o'clock, and there was nothing there. That's really changed over the past year. So I mean, if you start to get some of the other key pieces back in play, you know, the old TNT restaurant building, bigs, you hit some of those big pieces, you get those up, that can really change the dynamic of our downtown and lakefront area in a hurry.
Thank you, Kevin.
Who else has questions, comments?
I don't want to hog this page, so I mean, certainly if there are LEEDAC members who want to add their two cents, I'd certainly yield the microphone.
How about anyone from the public? No? Anyone from LEEDAC? Come on up. Nothing?
I think they're really all itching that we're finally done with this process. We can start digging into some of the actual physical implementation matters. I think that'll probably be one of the first subjects of our next meeting is okay, what piece of the apple does LEEDAC want to kind of make their own and take part? The implementation plan at the end, that action plan, we really tried to kind of tie all those pieces together and say, okay, who do we see as responsible? Who's going to be the champion of this issue? And so, and you'll note, quite a few of those columns do say LEEDAC, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us.
That's the part that makes it worth doing, is to see something happening.
It's just really nice to see that we started this process about two years ago, and
19 months.
A lot of those projects already have come to fruition during that time while this was coming together or we're in the process of doing it, so that's been going on.
I want to thank LEEDAC for their efforts. I attended little snippets of some of those meetings, and I know that a lot of work and a lot of reading and a lot of thought went on. And, you know, so often, we have these studies done, and they go on a shelf, and then you wouldn't ever think about them again. So pulling them all out and gleaming all the stuff that was really still valuable and timely, and then actually distilling that into this new relevant contemporary report, I really appreciate that. Well done. Thank you very much.
I think that the meeting that we had the other day is the kind of thing where you see a lot of movers and shakers that are there, and you get the thrill of seeing something going. It's just that I remember being in something like this, you know, like 10 years ago, and I'm hoping that we can sustain this now that we actually have the plan and we can actually work the plan and plan on work. And it is really exciting to see these things put down on paper and have the priorities, and I really believe that all of this work could come to something really, really positive, especially with the downtown and everything else going and the revitalization. So kudos to everybody involved in it, and I'm glad to be coming in late like this and be able to take credit later on when everything turns out great.
Well, yeah, and the community did a lot of work for us too. I mean, I think one of our plans was kind of expanding some of our special events in town, and those have sort of happened naturally on their own, and so that's, those are all great elements that feed into this plan as well.
Kudos to the city council, because it takes support to do these, to implement these projects and to fund them, you know, the ongoing studies and the ongoing events that we have going. And so it's really important, it's one of your top priorities of your goals, and that's how things happen when the councils approach to support this. So we really appreciate that.
And these are very easy things to have left behind too. I mean, there, you know, other deadlines come up, and these longer-term focus things are easy to kind of push off and go, there's other things. But having it at our fingertips, I think, will be helpful in that aspect.
And that brings up the question is, if things down the road, say a year and a half from now, our priorities change, this document's going to change, or how's that going to work? I mean, is this stone or?
Hopefully, it wouldn't have to be in stone. It certainly can be changed at any point, but hopefully it wouldn't happen necessarily in that one to two-year period. We did a lot of work to try and make sure that these were goals that include there. But certainly come three years from now, it probably is something that needs to be updated. We tried to keep it in a format that that would be easy, so that it wouldn't take another 19 months necessarily to update it. So that, we kind of were looking in the future of trying to make sure that we didn't have to repeat this process again to update it.
Yeah, some specific implementation parts would be updated, because those would be complete, and then we'd move on to new projects coming up too on there, so that part definitely would be changing as time goes forward.
We're definitely seeing things happen. Maybe we're on a roll.
Go with that.
All right. If there's no other discussion, we take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to adopt the proposed resolution approving the City of Lakeport Economic Development Strategic Plan, 2017 through 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, LEEDAC. Thank you, Kevin and Margaret. All right, moving on to council communications. Margaret?
Well, I just, I don't know if anybody has any to go out and see the Criterium this weekend, the bike race out downtown. It was really, it was really fun. I really enjoyed it. It was a great turnout, and I loved hearing all these people that are in Lakeport for the very first time, so it might be a little hard to get here, but wow, this is awesome. It's so worth being here. I loved the community, I thought it was great. So always music to my ears. And so we got, you know, a little busy event. And so, we got, you know, a little busy events going on, starting with Shakespeare in the Park on the end of this month and then we got the boat and car show, it's a big event. We got the Taste of Lakeport and, I don't know, just we're talking about this today. There's just a whole bunch of big events coming up in the next few weeks and so, lot going on in town.
Great. I was talking to some of the pro racers in the last race and the guy that won, he was from San Francisco, he loved it here and he donated back his money to the race next year because he wanted to see more racers come out, more people come out to watch it and he just thought it was a great place to be.
Yeah, Dave said that that's, that's the response he's getting from all the riders. He thinks it'll be a much bigger turnout next year with the riders up to ride so much here.
Great.
And maybe cooler.
Yeah.
We hosed them down, they were fine.
Dave will be back to give a report to council on the 15th of August on the race, so...
Great. David?
Nothing to report.
Doug?
Nothing to report.
Nick?
Nothing to report.
Chief?
Yeah, I'll mention it since you approved the contract for the SRO and I thank you for that, but we do plan to have an officer there on August 8th on the first day of school.
Great.
And then the other thing is, you won't have a council, the next council meeting won't happen because we'll be having the National Night Out against crimes, so just if I've got that all dialed in, I mean, we have a lot of businesses that are supporting us on that, so we're looking forward to...
So, for the public, it's August 1st?
August 1st, August 1st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Esplanade Street between Conacta Avenue and Helena.
We'll be serving hot dogs and...
Hot dogs, water, popcorn, snow cones.
All free.
All free. Numerous, numerous prizes for both kids and adults, raffle prizes for those that attend and also a bicycle decorating contest and parade for kids, so numerous other things that will happen there, so...
The bike parade was a huge hit last year. Kids loved it.
And Main Street Association is actually handling that and sponsoring it this year, so that's great.
Great. Kevin, you bringing your kids with their bikes?
Oh, yeah. No, absolutely. We did it last year and I think that was a great event and the Esplanade area is really nice too because it's right there on the lake.
Yeah.
One more shameless plug for the lakefront revitalization plan. Public draft's online. We got a tremendous amount of public input during the planning process. We really want to show it off to the community, so please go on to our website, take a look at it, feel free to comment and the planning commission will be discussing it. They'll be the only item on their agenda for their August meeting. Was that August 7th? I'm sorry, August 9th at 5:00 p.m.
Yeah, it's not a boring document, there's lots of pictures.
Lots of pictures.
So, then did they come to us after that?
Yeah, after, after planning commission takes a review of it, they'll make the recommendations into your body and so hopefully we'll be bringing this to you guys very shortly as well.
Kelly?
Just a reminder that because of National Night Out, we have shortage of meeting nights, so we've set up a special meeting next Monday at 5:15. You don't have to look down here. So, just a reminder, there will be a couple of...
Double check the calendar.
Yeah, there'll be a couple of items that just because of the timing of meetings, we're going to have to go on there.
Okay.
And then it's a closed session.
24th?
24th.
Monday.
Monday at 5:15. Everyone got that on their calendar?
You? We sent, yeah, I think Hillary sent out a list of the meeting dates.
Yep. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Barnes?
The only thing I really have to report is I got a lot of feedback from the criteria. A lot of people really loved it. I did get some other feedback from some of the local business owners, so I'm going to make it my goal, hopefully before the next meeting, to go stop in at every business on Main Street and see what their feelings are about events that close down the streets and all that kind of thing, because I did get some of that feedback from people. So, I want to make sure that that's being heard too. That's all I really have though. I thought it was a great event, it was fun watching it fly by.
There were definitely some things we learned from it. Doug and I were talking about it, that we'll know what to do next year and change up a few things, I think. Mayor Protan?
I wanted to thank our planning commissioner, Michael Froyo, for taking the time this past week to meet with District 4 Supervisor Tina Scott and I to walk us around the Beach Street, Beach Court neighborhoods. It was extremely enlightening and made so much more sense when I was actually looking at the places that he was pointing out rather than just hearing it when he would, you know, when you attended those past meetings. So, I look forward to seeing how that neighborhood improves with, I already appreciate the amount of time that the county staff, or city staff has dedicated towards doing what we can to work with the neighbors to see how we can improve that area. Thank you.
Councilmembers, sir?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Prolat?
Well, recently I went to Monterey and I cannot believe the amazing things that I learned when I was down there at the executive mayor and the council members forum, but one of them that really struck home to me was the, they did a big layout of the big one and what's going to happen when the big earthquake comes and they had some really scary scenarios, not unlike, you know, the earthquake and all the ones that we saw back in the 70s and 80s with Charlton Heston where everything is, goes to hell. But basically, they were saying that everything in Southern California will be cut off, the water, the electricity, the cable, all of that stuff. And what that struck home to me was that Doug and Margaret just recently had made plans so that in the event of an earthquake here in Lakeport, that they actually had an alternative route out of the city of Lakeport. They were actually planning so far ahead. It was extremely interesting in that the unreinforced concrete buildings and all the devastation and they talked about the fact that you can pay me now or you can pay me later, that San Francisco in 1905 was the number one city in the United States of America. After the earthquake, they never fully recovered and the point was that, you know, doing these kind of improvements are important, but then I talked to a lot of people from all over the state of California saying, "Yeah, we'd love to upgrade, you know, buildings and stuff, but we've got streets and all this other stuff." But then they showed what happened with New Orleans after the horrible hurricane Katrina and they compared them with the city up in Tennessee or something and they've lost like billions and billions of GDP, just the same as San Francisco did because they never recovered. But it's something that we need to think about and it's great that we have Margaret and Doug thinking ahead about possible disasters and how we get out of town. And we have to do those things, even up here in Northern California where we don't have, you know, the San Andreas Fault and stuff like that. But it was really a great learning opportunity for me. They also talked about affordable housing and how education affects housing and vice versa and so it was really a wonderful experience and I want to thank the city of Lakeport for sponsoring my stay down at the hotel. It was really worthwhile and I think it'll make me a better council member. So, thank you and congratulations for Doug and Margaret on planning the escape route out of Lakeport if and when the, you know, the courthouse falls.
It was more than me, it's the rest of my staff, but yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
It's a relief, huh? We haven't met in July, right? So, have we met in July?
This is the first meeting. We had, we had the 4th of July meeting was canceled because it was on 4th of July.
That's what I thought, just confirming, because our fireworks were fabulous.
Yeah.
So...
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, great show this year and Elizabeth took some really cool night photos that I'm obsessed with.
Oh, yes.
Has everyone seen those? They're, it's just beautiful. It's like, this is where we live.
Yeah.
I love it. All right, so that is it for tonight, meeting adjourned. Thanks for coming.